Folks, we got a couple trustees having to join us virtually tonight. And so we're just waiting for them to get connected and we'll begin. Good evening. I will reconvene in an open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on June 26, 2025, beginning at 6:07 PM. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted, and anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks while others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by security. We welcome civic input but insist that we remain respectful and civil. We'll start tonight with our pledges. Please join Catherine and Luke Crossnow in leading us in the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please join us now for a moment of silence. Thank you. To learn a bit more about our students who led us in the pledge tonight, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Communications Officer, Tyena Northington.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce you guys to Catherine and Luke Crossnow. You've met them briefly, but just to say and get to know them a little bit more, we have Catherine, who is a rising 4th grader at Duff Elementary, and her brother, sorry, Luke, is a rising 1st grader. They are looking very much forward to going to Disneyland in just a few short days, so that's all the rage right now. They know it's located in California, but before that, they say their first love actually is being right here at home in Arlington. So, on each of your desks, and I do want to apologize to Brooklyn and Melody that you guys can't see yours, but we will send you pictures. Our board members have a sketch that actually Catherine drew of each of you, as she's an aspiring artist, and it is absolutely adorable. You guys will love them, and they're pretty spot-on, so I must say you have incredible talent. She also drew the Colts poster for her 4th grade field day, which was really exciting. And as far as Luke, anything that has to do with food, he's happy, and he's super excited and bashful to be here today. He's been playing a lot of catch with his dad this summer, and if you don't know, their parents are two Arlington ISD proud employees. You might know Coach Crossnow, of course, Arlington High School girls golf coach, and if you don't know, the beautiful lady standing right behind me right here, Samantha, is actually Dr. Smith's executive assistant. So we're so excited. Let me get out of your way. There you go, Stan. She didn't want to be on camera, but this is the woman who really keeps us ticking, and I think that's just something so important that her children have also so much vibrancy that their parents have. So I just want to say thank you so much for leading us in the pledge. I know you've been practicing, and have a great time at Disneyland.
If I may add, I've seen them both play basketball, too, and they're pretty amazing as well. So Catherine and Luke, thank you for both being here tonight, and he thank you for being here. We appreciate your time.
Okay, we will move on with our meeting. Our first agenda item tonight, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, now we'll resume our meeting tonight. On our agenda, we do have our open forum listed first, but I do have, in recognition of the topic that that speaker is here to address, and the fact that we have appointments and a reception before that, I will exercise our prerogative to move that open forum to immediately before the agenda item that the speaker has requested to speak on. So we will move on to appointments. The first agenda item for consideration tonight is the ratification of administrative appointments for the principal of Ellis Elementary and Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction as discussed in closed session. Trustees, do I have a motion to ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session? I have a motion for Mr. Mike. Do I have a second? Have a second for Ms. Haynes. Trustees will move to vote. For the trustees who are virtual, I'll come to you and get your votes individually, and remember, we have to be able to hear the vote in the auditorium. I'll start with Ms. Fowler. Ms. Fowler, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Ms. Fowler votes yes. Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson votes yes. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion carries 7-0. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, thank you for that wonderful vote tonight, and it is my honor to first introduce our new principal for Ellis Elementary, Ms. Keisha Edwards. Please give her a round of applause. Ms. Edwards has over two decades of experience in public education, and she brings a strong background in instructional leadership, special education, and campus administration across multiple school districts. Her advanced degrees in education paired with successful service as an assistant principal, summer school principal, reflect a deep commitment to student growth and academic excellence. Her leadership is marked by versatility, strategic program coordination, and a passion for supporting diverse learning needs. Keisha, welcome. We're excited to have you.
Thank you. Breathe, and I know I have two minutes, so I'm gonna stay on script. President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith, thank you for the opportunity to serve and lead as the principal of Ellis Elementary. I'm privileged to work with such dedicated educators in AISD. I want to thank my former principal, now executive director, Grayson Topaz, who opened the door to my leadership journey. Amber Price, my current principal and mentor at Owly, who has been very instrumental in my leadership development and growth. To Dr. Dollar, Dr. Lee, Dr. Olston, Katina Martinez, Keith Boyd, Karen Hicks, Thomas Flag, and Courtney Boyd, I want to thank them for being pillars of support as I transition into this new role. To my family, my mother, my son, my sisters and my brother, my friends and soros who have showed up for me, I want to thank each of you for your continued support because it means the world to me. To my Owly family, you trusted me and helped shape me into the leader I am today, and for that, I will forever be grateful. And last but not least, to the Ellis staff and community, thank you for showing up and rallying for me. I'm excited to do the work alongside each of you, and I look forward to the great work that we will accomplish together. Thank you. Let's soar, go Eagles.
Equally exciting tonight, I would like to introduce you to our new Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Delise Hardy. Ms. Hardy offers a robust blend of instructional leadership and bilingual education expertise, supported by nearly 25 years of service in public education, with a proven record as a campus and district-level leader, including her current role as Director of World Languages. She has consistently advanced innovative language programs and championed academic excellence. Her background reflects a strong commitment to culturally responsive leadership and student achievement across diverse learning communities. Delise, we're excited to have you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, and our superintendent, Dr. Smith. I'm honored and incredibly excited to step into the role of Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. This is a tremendous opportunity, and I'm deeply grateful for the trust that you have placed in me. I want to take a moment to thank my family, some of who are present here tonight, for their unwavering support. Your love and encouragement have been my foundation throughout the journey. To the many mentors like Dr. Wertz and Ms. Patty Bustamante, and the many leaders and colleagues, principals, who have poured into me these past 24 years, thank you. Each of you have shaped me into who I am as a leader and an educator, and I carry your lessons with me each and every day. To the World Languages team, what a gift it has been to work alongside you these past five years. Together, we've built strong innovative language programs and advocated fiercely for emergent bilingual students. I'm so proud of what we've accomplished, and I look forward to carrying the mission forward. Truly, truly, a talented and dedicated group of people. And to my new team, let's go. I'm thrilled, so thrilled, to join the many knowledgeable and super talented people in curriculum and instruction. Together, I know we'll continue to move the work forward and move our district forward, making a lasting impact on teaching and learning for all students. Thank you for this incredible opportunity.
Congratulations, Ms. Edwards, Ms. Hardy. We will celebrate you in our reception. Trustees, we're going to take a brief recess for the reception tonight. Let's aim to be back in about 10 minutes. The time is 6:17, and we are now in recess. All right, it is 6:29, and we are back from recess. We'll turn now to the action item portion of tonight's agenda. Item A is the consideration of our 2025-2026 Compensation Plan adjustments. I do understand, though, that we have a registered speaker for open forum tonight. Ms. Crossnow, do we have registered speakers for tonight?
President Chapa, we do have one speaker.
Okay. We have Ms. Perenza Reddick, and Ms. Reddick, you can come down now. You'll have three minutes to address the board tonight. I do have a little brief statement to read before we start. So this is a routine part of the board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with trustees on items that are on the agenda, not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory, I don't think there's going to be an issue for you, Ms. Reddick, but derogatory comments aimed at an individual not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You'll have three minutes to speak, and when Ms. Crossnow notifies you that your time is up, please end your presentations. And if you have any documents for the board to review, please hand them to Ms. Crossnow tonight. All right, Ms. Reddick?
Good evening. Catch my breath, sorry. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. My name is Perenza Reddick, and I hope this evening finds you well. Before I begin, I would like to ask my colleagues who are here for support, they represent the avid coordinators in our district, to stand. They are my cheer squad, and without them, I could not do, we could not do our job without each other, leaning on each other. I am also a proud educator with 29 years of service in AISD and a dedicated avid coordinator. I'm here on behalf of the district's campus avid coordinators to express concern and seek clarification regarding the recently announced $5,000 salary increase for classroom teachers. While we applaud the district's efforts to enhance teacher compensation, it appears this adjustment may not extend to instructional support staff such as avid coordinators. This is particularly disheartening, given the essential role we play in fostering college, career, military readiness, supporting underserved students, and contributing directly to classroom instruction and student achievement school-wide on our campuses. If this exclusion stems from a classification issue, we respectfully ask that the district revisit how our positions are categorized. The avid program's success depends on the experience, commitment, and instructional leadership of its coordinators, qualities that align closely with the intended purpose behind the compensation initiative. Because I only have three minutes tonight, I've provided a list of my coordinator duties to justify why I, along with my respected avid colleagues, teach fewer classes than the new legislative requirement to accommodate our additional avid duties that often extend beyond our contracted school days, for which we do not receive a stipend. We would be grateful for any clarification you can provide tonight, and would welcome a conversation on how to ensure equity in recognizing all educators who directly impact student success. We avid coordinators are difference makers. We are classroom teachers. We advocate for our avid students. We advocate for all students. We are avid. Thank you. And I do have a list of the duties that, not just for me, but it's consistent across the district, what we are required to do on a daily basis. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. You can hand that to Ms. Crossnow, and she'll make sure that we get copies of it. All right, we'll move on with item A, and item A tonight is to consider our 2025-2026 Compensation Plan adjustments, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you, President Chapa, members of the board. I'd like to invite Holly Stanbaugh and Scott Kail up. They're going to present to you all an overview of the compensation plan, provide some clarity on legislation that was passed regarding specifically teacher raises, and provide you our recommendation as an administrative team for the appropriate compensation plan adjustments.
Good evening, President Chapa, trustees, and Dr. Smith. I'm honored to be here this evening to provide the administrative recommendation for the 25-26 Compensation Plan. Last week, I shared with you a board report, and that laid the foundation for some key things for you to consider over the course of that last week. And in that, I discussed House Bill 2 pertaining to compensation regarding legislative updates, and I also provided TRS active care rates for a 10% increase across Region 11. One thing that I'd like to highlight is Arlington ISD's teacher compensation. Arlington ISD continues to be a top competitor in the DFW metroplex and also the Western Metroplex, and I'm going to go between the two slides, because I want to highlight, you can see Arlington ISD is consistently across the board for teacher compensation, and that really is an attestation for all the work that you are doing as trustees, and we certainly appreciate that. And you can see from year zero to year 30, we consistently remain on top. So I'd like to get into the general pay increase recommendation from administration, and it is as follows. It is a $2,500 pay increase for teachers with three to four years of experience, a $5,000 increase for teachers with five or more years of experience, and that is through the teacher retention allotment that's funded through House Bill 2. It's going to be a 3% teacher market raise for teachers with one to two years of experience, a 3% market raise for the additional certified staff, and then a 3% midpoint raise for all other full-time staff for your consideration. With that proposed recommendation, this would be the 25-26 teacher salary schedule. This would put our first-year teacher pay at $66,100, and that is funded through a local allotment that is from district budget, and it would be a 3% market raise, which would be $2,000. And then you can see the teacher retention allotment at year three at $2,500, and then beginning at year five, it starts at $5,000 across the board. Now, one thing I'd like to point out is that teachers who do work more than 187 days, it will not change that allotment for them. Over the course of the last two months, I've discussed with you recommendations regarding our attendance clerks and our athletic trainers, and so I'm here this evening to recommend a grade change for our attendance clerks to an administrative support grade 2 and $1,000 annual increase to our athletic trainer stipend. The last recommendation I have this evening is a proposed increase of $33 per employee per month for our Arlington ISD healthcare contribution, and I've shown below what our 24-25 rates are currently and what that would entail our 25-26 rates to be with your approval of that $33 increase. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Stanbaugh. Comments or questions from trustees? I'll come to Ms. Richardson and Ms. Fowler once we go through the first run here in the room, just for ease of flow tonight. First questioner tonight, it's Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Ms. Stanbaugh and Mr. Kail. Ms. Stanbaugh, can you please go back to the very first slide that had the staff recommendation? Yeah, I think that was it. I wanted to, we talked about this last meeting, but for anyone wondering or watching, I wanted to reiterate that the state legislative outcome was very different this time in years past in a situation where they really prescribed how districts could allocate raises that are state-funded. And so we were hoping, and this is on our legislative agenda, and we reiterated this in our in-person visits, we were really hoping that they would come through with a greater basic allotment amount. So we're working with the basic allotment of $55 increase per student. What we were asking for was somewhere between $1,200 and $1,600 to even keep up with 2019 levels, and even though the state did come through, and we're grateful for anything that they came through with, they're highly prescribing what they can allocate. So if we did a 3% raise for folks that are not getting that state allocation, that comes out of the district budget, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and I will be supporting that increase because I think that it is absolutely critical for all of our staff to get something, and it's definitely going to be tough to swing because we were working with some budgetary constraints, given that the basic allotment was what it was. But our board will continue to advocate at the state level. Just because this general legislative session is over, we're going to keep advocating for greater increases and for greater local control, given that there's over 1,000 ISDs in Texas, and this allocation is to pay some of our teachers, which is wonderful and well-deserved, but we want to pay for all of our staff. We want to take care of all of our staff. I also really loved the recommendation about changing the pay grade for clerks and athletic trainers. Our attendance clerks are the faces of our schools, and I've watched a clerk for a long time. I admit, I could never do that job. So I think that these supplemental compensation recommendations are long past due, and I'm happy to support them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. I have Mr. Mike, and then Mr. Wilbanks is up after that.
I'll try to be real brief. I wrote out some of what I thought, but before I share my thoughts on this compensation proposal, I want to walk you through where I started, because my first instinct was to make sure everyone in Arlington ISD could benefit from the state's new teacher compensation increases. My first idea was, let's reclassify all AISD employees into the 087 PMS code, so everyone, not just teachers, could receive these raises. But we can't. The state doesn't allow it. If we push for it anyway, we'd be opening ourselves up to an audit we can't afford, and it's not just unwise, it's not even legal. So I moved to another idea, a percentage raise for all AISD employees equivalent to what the legislature gave the teachers, not just 3%, but the actual value of the $2,500 and the $5,000 teacher raises scaled across the district. That would have helped maintain some equity in the pay, but again, we can't do that because the state didn't fund us to do that. This entire board went to Austin multiple times. We met with lawmakers. We asked them to raise the basic allotment to what it should be. When that didn't happen, we asked them to give us a few hundred dollars more per student. When that failed, we even talked about switching from attendance-based to enrollment-based funding to give us some predictability in budgeting. When that didn't happen, we even asked them to at least protect what we have. Don't send public money to private schools. What did we get? $55 per student, still attendance-based, and $1 billion redirected to private schools. Now we're left trying to make long-term decisions with short-term money, and we don't even know the full impact of those decisions yet. We don't know how private school subsidies will affect our enrollment. We don't know how many students will leave our district. We don't know what kind of impact that will have on our budget. And then there's the homestead exemption increase. Every single one of us on this board benefits from that as property owners, but that benefit comes at the expense of students who haven't even entered our schools yet. It's a short-term gain with long-term consequences. Now, let's talk about healthcare. Healthcare premiums go up every single year. I've looked at alternatives myself, but I know if we leave the state plan, we can't just change our mind and go back. We'd have to sit out several years, so if those cheaper options spike in price, which they often do, we're stuck, and I believe that's the definition of a catch-22. So that brings me to tonight's proposal. I think all of this matters because people matter, but these decisions don't happen in a vacuum, and let's not kid ourselves, Arlington ISD is currently facing a $13 million deficit, and that's before we even talk about where we're going. Because the board people remember from 2023 and earlier, that board no longer exists. This is a new board with a new mindset. We're not here to preserve what was. We're here to push this district to become a premier district, one that leads, one that innovates, and one that earns the trust of every family we serve. But that kind of progress takes planning, it takes courage, and it takes money. So, yes, I worry about the budget. I worry about what we can't yet predict, but after reviewing the data, listening to the administration, and weighing every option, I believe this proposal is the most responsible forward-thinking step we can take right now. It's not the final answer, but it's the right next one.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, President Chapa, and thank you, staff, for your recommendation. I echo the sentiment of my two colleagues. First off, this is an historic raise. It's an historic time in this district. It comes on, this proposal comes on the heels of 5% or 4% raises since 2020. So if you've been with this district since 2020, you're looking at 23% increase in pay, and some will get higher, but still, that's almost unheard of in school districts in the state of Texas. So we've made considerable gains for our employees, and that's been a conscious effort of this board because we value all employees. And this board has committed itself to be competitive, but not just competitive. We know that money's not everything. We've also been very purposeful in the superintendent we hired to change the culture in this district, because I know it's my desire for AISD to become a destination district for educators in the metroplex and across the state to come work for, because not only do we pay well, but we're a great place to work. And that is a board priority of ours. I think those two go hand in hand. I'm grateful for the legislature in allowing us to continue to make leaps and bounds in getting our educators the money they deserved. I'm not real happy with the way they did it, with the strings attached, with it very surgical and inequitable, to be frank. So the teacher allotment, if you look outside of the teacher allotment, which is paying for those $5,000 raises, is very prescriptive to a very narrow slice of our employees. We were always advocating for the basic allotment. I want to commend this board. Was not able to attend any of the trips down to Austin, but we all worked tirelessly to work with our legislators, and our focus was, single-focused on increasing the basic allotment. Well, they did increase the basic allotment at $55, but that $55 was a repurpose of our Tier 2 golden penny yield, which was the one mechanism in our financing scheme that did rise with rising home values and allowed us to give, partially allowed us to give the 5-4% raises in the past. Well, that is now gone because that's been usurped to use for this new $55 basic allotment. So that increase in the basic allotment is a wash for us. It's repurposing old money for new. The other allotments, if you look at the fixed cost allotment, which was the next biggest chunk of 106, we can't use it for salaries. We can use it to offset some insurance or benefits costs, but we can't, it's mainly for keeping the lights on. When you look at, there was a small allotment of $45 for additional staff pay raises, but that was eaten up pretty quickly because it was, I don't remember the dollar, it was $45 per student ADA, which what equated to $3 million. So that didn't go far either. As my colleague, Mr. Mike, mentioned, we are running a deficit. Things are tight, and if you look, just a 2% raise, going into this without running the numbers looked like it was going to be beyond our reach based on the financial situation we're in. But we're not alone. Districts across the state, many, many, many of them in worse shape than we are. Thank goodness. Thank goodness that we've had the great financial stewardship, because, again, we value all employees. And even despite the predicament we're in, I'm grateful to Mr. Cal and Holly for coming forth with the proposal that you did. I'm, because of the inequities built in, I know we were really questioning 1% or 2%, but given where the market is and the fact that we value all employees, I'm grateful you've come with a 3% raise. It's going to be tough. But I can keep going about all the inequities, and that some districts out there, especially rural districts, got, when you look at the total dollar amount from the runs, rural districts got three, well over three times more than we did. So they're able to give much higher raises to the whole staff based on the increase they received with the rural and small district allotments. Money we didn't get to see. There's other inequities. Just like in 2019, when HB3 passed, there were winners and losers. Arlington was one of the losers, which put us behind initially in being able to pay competitively. We're not at the bottom, but we're nowhere near the positions others made out with HB2. So we're not seeing the relief we need from a budgetary standpoint. But again, I think my credit to you guys and Dr. Smith for coming back to us with their proposal that does try to make the mess of a hand. I think we were dealt a pocket ace-six offsuit, and we've made the best of it. While other districts turn that ace-six offsuit into a full house, our three-of-a-kind, three aces king high is pretty good. It is historic. Is it perfect? No. But I think it's doing right by our employees. I wish we could be the same across the board, but that's not the hand we were dealt. So thank you, guys, for coming to this proposal. I'll be supporting the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. I have Ms. Haynes next, and then just as a heads up, I'll come to you first, Ms. Fowler, and then I'll come to Ms. Richardson. Ms. Haynes.
Yes, thank you. So I'm sure that my colleagues and myself are all going to say the same thing this evening, so I am going to be considerably much more brief than others. It's okay, you said great things. I just wanted to thank you for putting the work into bringing us this recommendation that works to help fill the gap left by the legislature. I also want to make sure that any staff watching, whatever your role is in our community, any staff that's present, that you know that our board values you, and we value all the work you do equally, and we are working hard to try to find ways to have equity in that and to make sure that's happening. So I just, I want to thank you. I also will be supporting this this evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Ms. Fowler, do you have comments or questions this evening? None from Ms. Fowler. Ms. Richardson?
I do. Thank you, guys. I know that we are all here tonight frustrated, but also happy to tell you that we are doing a raise instead of saying that we are closing schools, we are laying off schools, that we are letting people go, that we actually get to come here and say, we are giving a raise. This compensation plan reflects a commitment to our staff. It's responsibility to our students. It's not everything our people deserve. I've said it time and time again, that our teachers and our staff deserve to be paid like the superheroes that we see in movies, but that is not what we get to do. We also have to make really sound financial decisions, not just for our teachers and students to continue to have places to come, but for the stability of our district as a whole, and we have to think about this long term. Our job at the end of the day is that we have to be principled in the choices we're making and not reactive to what the state has done. However, at the end of the day, the real failure has been in Austin. That is where the fault lies, and not in Arlington. The state is a broken system. It is not our job to fix their broken system, but it is our job to take care of our educators and our staff here in Arlington ISD. So I am glad that instead of talking about the really hard choices we could have made, that we're even saying there is a 3% raise at all, because I think that is absolutely deserving of everyone. I just want to make sure at the end of the day that people understand, we understand the frustration. I am glad that we are going to put money into health care. I think our health care matters for our teachers and our staff. We hear often how it is not affordable, is not the best plan possible. We understand that. I hope that we continue looking at other health care options down the road, because we have heard that people are not pleased with it. But at the time where health care is increasing by 10% at a time, this is something that we can do to say, we hear you, we understand. Our dollar does not go as far as it used to, sadly. And with the state, when they refuse to prioritize public education, because that's what they refuse to do, is to prioritize it, here we are, trying to stretch everything we have. At the end of the day, I wrote down the number that we have. We still have, oh my goodness, where did I write it? They are sitting on a record surplus, and they refuse to prioritize it. So here we are, trying to figure out what to do and pinch every penny. And so I hope at the end of the day that our staff and teachers, our educators and our parents and our stakeholders understand that we value them, we care about them, and that we are not going to stop advocating at the state level, just like trustee Mike said.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. Fowler, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Yes. Thank you, President Chapa. I want to thank our finance department and our HR department for putting in the many, many hours in trying to work the numbers and be able to show our employees how much they are appreciated. I want to thank my fellow trustees. I know we've had some hard times and will continue to have some hard times, but I'm so grateful that everyone on this board is so concerned about our employees and doing what's best for them, and I'm proud of our decisions. Yes, we wish we could do more, but our hands are tied. I'm so proud that we're able to do the 3%, and I just want our employees to know how much we appreciate them, and we wanted to do more, wish we could, but we're proud to be able to offer you the 3% raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Any other comments or questions from trustees tonight?
Okay, I just have a couple of questions and a couple of comments, Ms. Stanbaugh. Ms. Stanbaugh, I know there was the presentation last Tuesday, and there was a slide in that presentation that had some different positions that, for all intents and purposes, when we say teachers, we think teachers. And we were still getting guidance from TEA, continue to get it almost every day, is my understanding. We have since learned that some of the folks on that list can, in fact, qualify under the coding for the teacher retention allotment, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, including, and I think the folks pertinently here tonight are those folks, they are included in the 087 PMS code to get the raise, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. So I just wanted, I wanted to make that clear, but I also, I also want to make clear that that is not a, while we appreciate the love, that is not, that's not a district-level decision. The state has taken, if you can go to the slide where you have a very lengthy footnote in the bottom right-hand corner, right there. So when my colleagues were talking about, the state was very directional with where this money went. They did something they haven't really done before, at least at this, in my opinion, at this level, and they defined, for the purposes of this particular raise, exactly who they wanted it to go to, down to the employee code, which we do not, the PMS code, we don't set that. That is a state-level decision. So what the state has done is they took a, they're going to, I will start with the fact that they're saying that it was a historic $8.5 billion investment in public education. A huge chunk of that actually is not coming to school districts. A huge chunk of that is what is built in, they're calling it property tax relief. So it's a good thing, as Mr. Mike said, for taxpayers, because it helps us out on the property tax side, but it's a little inaccurate to say that that money is going to public education, because it's really not. It's paying money that otherwise would come in through property taxes, it's sort of an offset. So that's not, a big chunk of that $8.5 billion is actually not coming to school district coffers in some way. When it comes to the raises, what the state did is they set aside $4.5 billion for this definition of who a classroom teacher is. And that's a big pot of money, $4.5 billion. For every other educator and staff member and administrator or anyone who is on payroll on a school district in the state, they set aside $500 million. So a very big pot of money, which is great for the people who are getting it, and I'm glad that they did it, it's for this very specific definition. And for everybody else, it's a little teacup. It's not a big bucket, it's a little teacup. And then when it comes down to us, we're in the position, it's been brought up several times, we're talking about basic allotment increase. The basic allotment is sort of, it's the money that the district gets that allows us to decide how we want to spend it. And to get back to the spending power we had in 2019, we needed about $1,400 increase in the basic allotment, just to get to the purchasing power we had in 2019. So if inflation was roughly 20%, since then, we have 20% essentially less money to do what we did in 2019. We got the $55 in the discretionary spending. The rest of it, the vast majority of it, was directed spending. And so it was a little bit of an interesting move on the state's part, because we knew, they knew, going into this legislative session, to get us back to the level of purchasing power we had just six years ago, we needed $1,400 in the basic allotment. We got, we got very, very little of that. And even if you took all the extra allotments that they've now created, it's still far, far short of $1,400. So I think intentionally, going into this session, one reason districts were pushing so hard for the basic allotment increase is the vast majority of districts in this state right now are operating in a deficit budget. I mean, if you look at the news, and this is budget season, the news is just, you know, District A adopts deficit budget, District B adopts deficit budget, and that's been the case starting for a couple of years ago. We have been very fortunate not to be in that, in that, because we've had such a substantial amount of reserves, and we've drawn on them. And I'll come back in a minute, because we made another very intentional decision that I thought was pretty courageous five years ago in passing a VATRE. But what that did by not giving us the basic allotment increase and knowing that the vast majority of districts are in deficit budget mode already, and then making so much of the money go to a very specific purpose, what the state has kind of done is forced districts in the position of, the state's picking winners and losers with their PMS code decisions and who gets the money, but we're left with the decision of how do we continue to treat people the same way that we have, we have been very intentional about doing in this district for a very long time. As Mr. Wilbanks said, no other district in the state has given five years of 4% increases. I mean, not just the last few years. I don't think that's happened ever, as far as I know. And that's the commitment that this board has made, but it makes it so much harder to do that going forward, because essentially, one very narrowly-defined category of our folks are going to, are going to receive this benefit. But they're basically half of our employees, and we got a little tiny, like, drop of money to take care of the other thousands of employees. And so it kind of pits employees against each other, and there's no pile of money that we can kind of, like, go to in a deficit mode and just say, well, we're just going to go use this money, and we're going to keep everybody, you know, the same way we've always done, we're going to give the same raise the state gave to this very narrow number of people, we're going to just treat everybody the same way. We just don't have the funding to do that, and the state knows that. And I think intentionally, not everybody, I think it was a little bit intentional on some of their part to pit our employees against each other and put us in the position of, we're the front line, and we want to make, do right by everybody, but it's just frankly not a situation where we can do it. All that being said, I do think, I mean, the tone up here tonight, because I think we're frustrated at the state, has been, I think, a little bit sort of, you know, down key on it, when it says, this is actually still a very good compensation plan that y'all have put forward. It's, in my opinion, a very generous compensation plan. We have the pass-through raises. I think in some prior budget discussions that have come up here, I mean, the numbers supported maybe perhaps somewhere in the vicinity of a 1% to 2% general raise for everybody else. The proposal tonight was 3%, which I think in any other year would have been, especially in this environment, is a very generous move. I know I've seen school districts across the state, they put out their, they've been putting out their percentage increases and incorporating the state raises as part of those increases, and some of them are going to have, I think, higher percentages than what our percentages will be, but it's because we're so far high at, if you can show the pay scale on the UEA chart, we're so high on the pay scale that a $5,000 raise for a veteran teacher in Arlington is just necessarily going to be a smaller percent raise than somebody who's in a district that pays far behind us, because that $5,000 is a bigger percentage of their paycheck. So, you know, you have to look at the actual numbers, and at the end of the day, if you're looking at this chart, we have been, in my opinion, and I think the charts the last few years have shown it, the most competitive district for pay in North Texas. The package tonight builds on that. It maintains our position, and it does so in a way that I think is as fair and equitable as we can make it, given the hand that we have been dealt by the state. So I want to highlight that. I also want to highlight the fact that we're increasing the health care premium, which we haven't done, I think, in four or five years now. And I know that given the magnitude of the health care premium increases, it's, some people might say it's just, it's not enough, and it's not. But in this district, we have prioritized salary-based compensation over health care premium subsidies in the past, because the premium subsidies don't count for TRS retirement credit, only the salary does. So we have been intentional about focusing more on the salary side. But we do have the health care increase there tonight. And I just want to, you know, point out, and Mr. Wilbanks mentioned this earlier, in 2020, we went out for a VATRE, and we went to the voters, and we said, we need, we believe that for us to be financially viable and to do right by our employees and our students, we need to increase the tax rate, which is never a popular decision to do. And the voters approved it in a November 2020 election. And so this community came out and put us in a position to be able to be what we are now. And I see Ms. O'Brien back there, and I'm just going to, like, point her out for a minute, because, Ms. O'Brien, you know that we met back at a Starbucks back in 2019, and with some other folks, and there was general dissatisfaction with where Arlington had fallen on this salary scale. And I said, give us some time to make it right. And the voters had faith in what we stood for. The campaign was based on being, on pay our teachers, that was the sign. And the community, by doing that, has given us, on any given year, and Mr. Cal, I'm going to, you know, murder the numbers here a little bit, but I think it's anywhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 70 million benefit annually from that decision. That's enabled us to be in this position, and we have, I think, shown that we did what we said we were going to do, and the vast majority of that money has gone into compensation, and that's why we're in the position we're in to be able to continue to be competitive based on this scale. It's why we're in the position, as several of my colleagues have mentioned, tonight, we are not taking the actions that many other districts are having to do right now, where they're having to go out for a VATRE for the first time in a very negative political environment. They're having to make a decision to do non-planned school closures, meaning they're in, their backs against the wall, and they're having to close because financially they have to do it. And they're actually doing staff layoffs, just straight-up staff layoffs. We have done none of those things. We're not in a position where that is on the horizon. That being said, I think we're in a position where there are going to be difficult decisions coming down. This type of treatment from the state and funding from the state, I think, is going to put us in the position eventually where we are going to have to make some harder decisions. But we don't have to do that now. We have been very intentional about using what we have and what we have built up and what we've earned to put us in a position where we have the runway to make those changes over an amount of time where we can adjust, we can make those changes not harder, as hard on our staff and our students in our community. And so, as several folks have said tonight, I'm very proud of this board, boards that came before this one, of putting this in the position where, in a very difficult environment, we can all go out tonight and support what I think is a very strong, generous compensation package for our folks. And it's not perfect, nothing ever is, but it's a really good one. And so thank you all for all the work that y'all have done. Mr. Rivas and the finance staff are doing all sorts of financial gymnastics that I don't understand for us to be able to do a lot of what we do. But at the end of the day, the biggest beneficiary is our community, our staff, and our kids. And that's what we're here for.
So Ms. McMurro, do you have a motion?
Well said, President Chapa. Yes, at this time, I would like to make a motion. I move to approve the 2025-2026 compensation plan adjustment as presented.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. I have a motion for Ms. McMurro. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second.
I'll give it to Ms. Richardson. Due to the lag, yes. And the second will be from Ms. Richardson. Trustees will move to vote. I'll come first to Ms. Fowler and then Ms. Richardson for their votes. Trustees, let's.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler is a yes. Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson is a yes. I'm showing all trustees present voted in the affirmative. Those online voted in the affirmative. The motion unanimously carries. The compensation plan adjustments have been adopted. Dr. Smith?
Thank you, President Chapa, members of the board. I simply want to say thank you. I want to thank our HR team, our finance team, and the rest of our cabinet members. We have logged more hours of meeting than any of them would like, probably, but we believe we got a good compensation package in front of you, and we're grateful for your support. I also want to be really clear, I'm very grateful for the financial stewardship of this board and previous boards and previous superintendent. You allowed us to be in a position where, frankly, I don't believe we have a budget deficit, we have an appropriations deficit from the state, and you have allowed us, by being thoughtful in the way you've managed money, to be in this situation for our employees. So, I'm very grateful for our board's support, very grateful for what we're able to do for our staff, because they do amazing things for our kids each and every day, and I'm grateful to be a partner with our administrators to help come up with this plan, so thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll move on to Item B tonight. That's to consider the approval of the 2025-2026 Appointments to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and I will just turn it over to the Chair of our Community Engagement Committee, Ms. LeAnn Haynes.
Can I give background on both CBOC and FFC right now? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, this evening, we will be appointing members to serve in the 2025-2026 terms for our Financial Futures Committee and our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and both of these committees are comprised of community stakeholders, teacher representatives, other staff representatives, parents, business owners. So, it is an application process. Those applications went up on our website in February, March-ish, and were open for about two months. So, anyone is eligible to apply if they live within our district. Our charge that is out for these committees does have certain guidelines, so to make, to make sure that our committee is made up of people from across our district, we do intentionally look for representatives from all parts of AISD, and so, we did very intentionally go through these applicants and make sure that they fit into that charge. So, we are, we are really looking forward to the committee that we're going to put before you tonight, especially with the work ahead in our district. These individuals will meet quarterly. As a committee, our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee will work with Mr. Kelly Horn and his team and oversee the rest of the execution of our 2019 bond projects that are still out there, and then our Financial Futures Committee will meet with our Finance Department and kind, you know, work to advise us on the budget and ways that we, as a district, could potentially make some adjustments based off their perspective as community members. So, it is a big lift that they do, and it is important that we are involving our community in the decisions that these committees are recommending to our board, so.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Any comments or questions from trustees on the appointments to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee for next year? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the appointments to the CBOC? Ms. Haynes?
Yes. I move to approve all the 2025-2026 Appointments to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, member recommendations as presented.
I have a motion for Ms. Haynes. Is there a second?
Second.
Give a second to Ms. Fowler. All right, trustees, we'll move to vote, and I'll come to Ms. Fowler and Ms. Richardson momentarily. Trustees, let's move to vote. Ms. Fowler, can I get your vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Richardson, can I get your vote?
Yes.
All trustees present voting in the affirmative, those appearing virtually in the affirmative, the motion carries unanimously. We'll move on now to Item C, and I'm going to go back to Ms. Haynes for consideration of the 2025-2026 Appointments to the Financial Future Committee. Ms. Haynes?
Are you coming back to me to explain again about the Financial Futures Committee?
Whatever you would like to do.
Okay. So, I lumped both my explanations, y'all, into one thing, so now, we will be looking for a motion to approve that Financial Futures Committee.
Ms. Haynes, are you making that motion?
I am not. I think that somebody else might want to.
Okay. I have Mr. Mike.
I move to approve the 2025-2026 Financial Futures Committee Appointments as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Mr. Mike is one of our three members of the Community Engagement Committee that meets with CBOC and FFC. Ms. Richardson is the other member, along with Ms. Haynes, who is the chair this year. I do want to point out that our trustees, as much work as we do in the community, as many meetings as we have here, the three trustees who serve on the Community Engagement Committee, they go to the FFC and CBOC meetings, so that's signing themselves up for about another two weeks' worth, two weeks' evenings' worth of meetings over the course of the year. So, it is a pretty heavy lift, and I very much appreciate their work. Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Mike. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Mr. Will Banks. We'll move to vote. Trustees, let's vote. Ms. Fowler?
I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler votes in the affirmative. Ms. Richardson?
I vote yes.
Ms. Richardson votes yes. All trustees present and appearing virtually voted in the affirmative. The motion unanimously carries. We'll move on now to our consent agenda for this evening. Does anyone wish to pull any items for separate consideration on consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Will Banks. Is there a second? I have a second from Ms. Haynes.
A second.
We'll give that one to Ms. Haynes. Trustees will move to vote on the consent agenda. Ms. Fowler, can I get your vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler votes yes. Ms. Richardson?
I vote yes.
Ms. Richardson votes yes. All trustees appearing in person and virtually voting in the affirmative, consent agenda unanimously carries. We will now move on to our open forum for non-agenda items tonight. Ms. Crossno, do we have any speakers registered for non-agenda forum?
President Chapa, we do not.
There being no speakers for non-agenda forum, we'll move on now to, I see there's no superintendent's report tonight. No superintendent's report tonight from Dr. Smith. We'll move on now to trustee reports and comments. Are there trustees with reports or comments tonight? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Chapa, and I do want to give congratulations to one of our colleagues, Ms. Melody Fowler, who is now officially a master trustee. She just graduated from Leadership Tasby, and we're all real proud of her. Congratulations, Melody. Oh, wait, we need to wave her big, big head.
You're too funny. Thank you so much, and I appreciate those of you who were able to attend my graduation, and it really meant the world to have you there. Thank you so much, and thank you, Sarah McMurro, for making all of my big heads and making sure that they were there at the graduation ceremony.
Congratulations, Ms. Fowler. I'm on the board of the Texas Association of School Boards, which runs Leadership Tasby, and Leadership Tasby, for almost 30 years now, has been a big step up in trustee training. You have to apply to be a part of it. It is a really big deal, and so, we are very proud of Ms. Fowler for going through that program this year and becoming a master trustee. I understand, Ms. Richardson, you have a report tonight?
Not a report so much as a statement, because this is our last board meeting of the year before we come back again in August. One of the things that I have really enjoyed in the last two years of serving on the board is being able to go and tour and visit each of our elementary schools, junior high and high schools, trying to find out what schools are proud of, what are the great things that we don't always get to hear about, what are their pain points, and the fact that Trustee Mike has joined the board and joined me in that has been a really great experience the past two years. I want to make sure that we often hear, "Well, how do you know where to go? What do you do?" It is based on the fact of seeing the schools that we've not been to before, the schools that do need the attention, but in this next year, that process will start again. So, if we have schools that are interested or would like for us to come visit during the day and to see what you are most proud of, the things that we don't get to hear about in board meetings, the things that maybe don't make the Arlington Report or the district blog or website, let us know. We want to come visit you, we want to see you, and we want you to understand that all of us, all seven of us, we are so much more than faces that come every other Thursday night. We are people who really care about our district, we want to know what's going on, and it's great for Trustee Mike and I that we get to come back to the board and share that our colleagues, most of them all have jobs during the day, they have places they have to be, and so, we are very lucky to have the freedom to come and do these visits, but to share with our colleagues, because they are as invested in this process as we are, and we are grateful for our colleagues who take interest in our reports and let us share the good, the bad, and the ugly. But as we wrap up this year, just wanted to share with our staff that we would love to come and visit you over this upcoming year.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. I do have a brief report tonight, continuing the tradition that I started last year. During this month, I am honored to celebrate Pride Month and recognize the contributions and worth of our LGBTQ students, families, and staff. Everyone deserves to live, work, and learn in an accepting environment that's free from discrimination and respectful of their dignity. I hope that Arlington ISD is and continues to be such a place. We've been fortunate to live in a time of strong progress towards equal rights, and challenges remain. Recent events show that progress can be fragile. As was recently highlighted in the Arlington, Fort Worth Star Telegram editorial page, for the first time in over 30 years, students in many districts will no longer be able to associate and use their First Amendment rights to engage in certain types of student activities and clubs. This shows that we must be vigilant against the idea that equality moves in only one direction, but during this month, let's take a month to celebrate a more inclusive society, and let's recommit to fighting injustice and to creating safe, welcome, learning spaces for everyone. And that concludes my report. Madam Secretary, do we have any matters that have been reported for further consideration tonight?
We do not. Thank you.
Okay, there being no further matters for consideration, and all items on the agenda tonight have been addressed. We have no matters to discuss in closed session, and so, there being no further business this evening, we will adjourn this meeting at 7:20.